Hey Hannah, can you do a sound check?
Tats, tats, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order, this is the July 12th, 2023 meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission. First item of business, I'll call roll. Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Casey.
Present.
Commissioner Storm.
Present.
And I'm Commissioner Delich. So. First item would be. Public comment on non-agenda items, so if anybody in the audience has any. Planning type thing they'd like to comment on that's not on the agenda, now would be the time. And we typically, we don't re- react to things, but we take note, and if there's some future action, maybe we'll work on it. So seeing no takers, I'll move on, the next, we'll move to the business part of our meeting now. And I'll just describe the process we follow. For the benefit of people who haven't been to a meeting before, I'll call an item up for consideration. And planning staff will describe what the request was and what their findings and recommendations are. Following that, we will. Allow the applicant to come up and state their case. And then following that, we will open the hearing to the public. And anybody in the audience can comment on that item, whether they support it, don't support it, state their reasons and. We'll ask you to try to limit your comments to three to five minutes. And following all public comment, we'll close the public part of the hearing and we will deliberate and vote either to. Recommend support or denial of the issue, or possibly we'll table it if there's any reason. And as we go through, we're guided by our zoning code, we don't. We don't legislate, we just basically look at what's in the code. And make our decision based on that, and with that, are there any conflicts or ex parte contacts? Okay, I'll mention, I do live in the neighborhood where one of the items. Is, and I had a couple of neighbors contact me and ask me what's going on, and I just basically said. There's a public hearing and I can't talk about it, and if, you know, if you're interested, come to the meeting, or you can follow it online. And so, that was that. With that, we'll move on. The first item of business is major temporary use permit at 23 Manitou Avenue, a food truck. That's TUP 2035.
Twenty.
Twenty-three oh five.
Alright, thank you. Major temporary use permit for mobile vending or food truck at 23 Manitou Avenue, also known as the El Colorado Lodge. I am presenting this presentation, my name is Erin Ringsred, a planner two. The. Request is for one food truck, Monday through Sunday, 11 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This area is zoned commercial, and it is, the planning commission is the decision-making authority for temporary use permits. This is an aerial showing the entire property, and just where that's located on the property by, there's three driveways that access this lot, and it's in the center, off the center driveway curb cut. In a more zoomed in view, to give a little bit of additional context in terms of where it's showing up, this wouldn't. Take away any parking spaces that are required, that are the minimum requirements for the lodging use that's currently occurring on that site, which is a combination of short-term and long-term rentals. It is noted that. The adjacent business does rent out a portion of the parking spots, you can see them off to this, the west here, so this is close to where a previous food truck has been approved. In terms of pub- public involvement, we have not received any additional comments on this hearing, or on this item, either for or against. In terms of the way the code is written, licensed restaurants may conduct outdoor sales for mobile food carts on private property. Mobile food carts would be inspected and licensed by the El Paso County Health Department, and a minimum of one garbage receptacle must be provided near the mobile vendor. With the provision of a recycle container is encouraged. The applicant would be responsible for ensuring that all food trucks operating at the site are in compliance with those items listed previously. And any other applicable regulations. This. And that this use would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is compatible with the purpose and intent of the LUDC and the zone district in which it will be located. And so this item, it is located on a commercial property, it has been set back from where that curb cut meets the road, outside of, you know, the view shed triangles as someone turning in and out. In terms of parking, as stated before, there's some parking directly adjacent to the food truck as it has visual connectivity to the roadway there. But that they have more than met, in terms of the lot as a whole, the parking requirements for the combined uses that are proposed with the addition of this temporary use. Staff recommends approval of the application with the following condition, that the major temporary use permit shall terminate five years from the date of issuance. And then this is the motion language. Any questions?
Any questions for stamp?
A question, you said that it will be licensed by El Paso County Health Department, but also with the city of Manitou, right?
Correct, they would have a business license to operate within city limits, you'd be granting them the permit to say this is a permitted use of this property. But the health department would oversee, making sure, you know, all food safety is met within the truck.
And why the termination of five years?
This was a consistent duration with previous mobile vending conditional use permits that have been approved, so we were wanting to be just consistent across the board there, so that's where that term is coming from.
Thanks.
Would the applicant like to step to the table and. Stitch your name and address for the record? Oh, you have to push the button and get it real close, be like two inches from it, you can just pull the whole thing over, yeah.
My name is Stephen Eschelman, at 111 Fairview Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard, I love making barbecue, I look forward to serving the community and being in compliance with all of you and everything that I need to be.
Any questions for the applicant?
So, you're not going to rotate trucks in, this is in and out, this is going to be a permanent, essentially a permanent vehicles parked there for barbecue?
Yes ma'am.
How about trash, what's the plan for trash?
To do as required, to have the trash cans, and then every single night, I'm going to take it to the dumpster. I noticed in some of the materials submitted here, that he said you anticipate 50 to 100 customers a day, I'm just curious how you arrived at that number? I used to run gold. Well. I used to run Gold Tooth Annie's in security, and when I got there, it was open one day a week, and I put a lot of effort into it, it was open four days a week, and I saw that many there, and. People would come to visit me, but it wasn't a lot of foot traffic, I just anticipate there being a lot higher foot traffic and also visibility.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, you can sit down if we have more questions, we'll bring you back. Okay, the public hearing on this item is open now, if anybody would like to comment, now would be the time. And seeing no takers, I'll close the public hearing.
Just, just so I learned, is it typical to have a five-year termination?
Um.
Never seen it.
Well, I think we approved one a couple of months ago, that was, yeah, so it's, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, there was a discussion about it, a couple meetings ago, and it was about. You don't want to make it a permanent one, so any temporary, they have to have a, an end of life, and five years seemed reasonable.
I'll make a motion to approve TUP 2305 major temporary use permit at 23 Manitou Avenue, based upon the findings and the requests of the planning department.
A second.
There's no more discussion, in all favor, say aye. And then, okay, so that's unanimous? So, that's done. So. Move on, the next item of business is short-term rental 2305, short-term rental at 295 Villa Linda Vista, Jeannie Richardson applicant. Yeah, yeah, we'll call you up when it's your turn, thank you.
Great, thank you, Chelsea Royston for the record. As you stated, STR 2305 is for a short-term rental at 295 Villa Linda Vista. The request is to. Proposing to rent two bedrooms of the four-bedroom home while residing in the home full-time. It is staff's current stance that this application is incomplete, but the property owner is requesting to be heard by city planning commission with the information that's been provided. All property owners who submit an application have a right to be heard by planning commission, so staff is referring the application for consideration. The. So as I stated, it is a four-bedroom house, according to the Land Use and Development Code, for short-term rentals, the. Property is required to have a half, or one parking space for the first two bedrooms, and then a half parking space for each bedroom above that. Given that this is a two-bedroom rental with a full-time residence, I, staff recommends combining those requirements and having a minimum requirement of four parking spaces on-site. The site currently accommodates three parking spaces, one in the garage and two on the site. The, also worth noting is that the property fronts Villa Linda Vista, however, access to the property and to the parking spaces is provided via an access easement on private property. So, the applicant did not provide any indication of whether the easement permits access for commercial uses such as short-term renting. Here we have our subject property. As well as a map showing the existing short-term rentals, the proposed short-term rental is the one in the upper right portion. It's kind of got a lighter green circle around it, that is the proposed, you can see there are five others in the area. Here we have the site plan, forgive me, I had to kind of. Rotate it around, north is to the left, so Villa Linda Vista is that purplish road along the bottom of the screen, the access easement is the white road. You can see parking areas shortly after turning onto the access easement, there is a spot in the garage, and then another parking area. Further down the access easement from that. The owner has indicated that the trash cans, though not bear-proof, will be kept in the garage. And as I stated, the owner intends to live full-time on, in this property and rent out a couple of the spare bedrooms. Staff has received nine letters of opposition to this application, they have been provided in an email today, and also written copies are distributed. Several of the letters mentioned that the use is disallowed by the neighborhood covenants. Staff wanted to make it known that it's not within the purview of the city planning commission to enforce private covenants. I'm going to actually back up and. Reiterate some of the. Shortcomings of the application. So, staff's concerns mainly revolve around the following four items, the onsite parking is not adequate for both a single household dwelling unit and a short-term rental. The listing advertisement has not been provided as required in the application packet. There is no indication on the site plan of where the fire extinguishers are to be placed, and details regarding commercial access to the property via the access easement have not been provided. With that, staff recommends. The following conditions, should the planning commission find it appropriate to grant STR, number one, that the short-term rental capacity be limited to one bedroom, one vehicle, and two guests. And number two, a copy of the listing, listing ad shall be provided to the city prior to approval of a business license, and this concludes my presentation.
Questions for stamp?
If you could just help me with my memory, I don't recall ever having an incomplete application coming before the planning commission.
Is, as far as the current planning staff is here. Is, as far as, uh, the current planning staff is here, has been here, we have not brought one forward. Uh, the reason that we decided to bring this one forward is because it was submitted in March originally. And the processes that we have in place for short term rentals are such that when an application is submitted, we place a hold on the buffer within five hundred feet. Um, or the five hundred foot buffer. So staff went through, uh, I believe, three rounds of, um, review with this application each time submitting a letter to the applicant indicating the shortcomings. Each time receiving another incomplete application. And that has brought us from March to July. The whole time that buffer has been inaccessible for anyone else seeking a short term rental permit. Uh, so therefore, just kind of in the spirit of fairness, staff decided to kind of let the chips lie. The applicant did have the opportunity to withdraw the application as an alternative.
Okay, so we can deny the application. And then that would free up the space for others who might want to apply and complete the application?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a reason provided why there's, it's not complete?
Um, staff had advised the applicant to consult with a planning consultant to complete this application because there are a, a number of very technical requirements of these applications. Uh, the owner, uh, did not take that advice and it, I, I think it just didn't quite make there. Um, we can ask the applicant.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, the applicant could come up to the table. State your name and address for the record. You need to push the button in the middle there and get it real close to you. And state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeannie Richardson at eleven two ninety five via Linda Vista, Manitou Spring.
Okay, now, uh, the floor is yours, uh, initially. Do you, can state what you want regarding your request?
I guess I misunderstand, but some of them.
Oh, excuse me. Could you get the, bring the, just pull the mic over real close to you? Yeah, that's good.
I forgot what you say.
Um, well, it's your opportunity to speak. You know, you're the applicant and you can state what you want about the, uh, what your request is and anything that could help us understand what you're doing.
Well, I have a, actually five bedroom house and my house is lucky, four thousand square foot and then I live in by myself. Then I have a, and a boyfriend living with me six, seven years. So house is pretty big and then I thought I can rent it out for short term. I've been trying getting short term rental for since last year. And then they have a moratorium, so they could not accepted my application last year. So I didn't even know I supposed to have a license, so I s- I couldn't do anything last year until this year. Then when I put the application, they got some bunch of construction going on. I came here five, six times. That one paragraph from fires crushing and one of them area. I guess we didn't fin- we didn't quite put it in. I guess something missing that. So I told him we're gonna go ahead, go forward because everything else we have except the, I think it fires crushing, we don't show that. I didn't know that until application deadline is we missed by. Uh, cause I keep coming here and then nobody working in a back room and then I have a hard time to communicate it until last minute and deadline's already over. So we thought I was gonna go ask him if the, we can still provide it for the fires crushing. I think that's only the missing, everything else we submitted it. I lived there for fifty years and then I lived two ninety five via Linda Vista for thirty years and in two fifty eight Linda Vista for twelve, fifteen years. So I lived total fifty year, but my kids all grown up and gone. I got big house. I thought I can rent it out for a couple of room for in the summertime and then I didn't realize so much difficult.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
The, the city has explained that there's, the requirement is for four parking spots and, and you have three available?
No, we have a two car garage. Then I have a two car. You can look at a site plan. So, uh, we have a two car parking. We got two, I got total six parking. Then if I need a more parking, I know I can do more. I have a, almost a three quarter acre land. I can put it in a more, but I didn't know I supposed to have a more.
Well, the staff report says that only half the garage could be parked in because there's too much stuff in the garage.
No, no, we have a two car. We always park two car. We already doing a renovation for garage right now in a one area. So I parked the one car and one car I parked outside. But we always have a two car parking inside my house. And we got four parking, spare parking, four of them. But if they need a more parking space, I can glad to provide it more parking space in a Linda Vista area, but I don't think we needed it. So I didn't, I didn't. Because ninety percent time, just me and my boyfriend home, nobody else living is a three quarter acre land and then I, I can provide them more if they need it. But since I already got four parking, I don't think necessarily I need a more.
Um, just for the record, you know, in the staff report, it says that half of the garage has is stored for the garage, uh, for the trash bins.
No, uh, trash bin is uh, next to two part garage underneath, uh, we have a basement. We, we, we put it in a, uh, trash can underneath our basement. I do have oversized two car garage. We do put sometimes trash can in a garage.
Thank you. Anything, any other questions for the applicant? Justin?
Yeah, I have one. Uh, so your plan is to rent it out while you live there full time?
Well, actually I don't live in a full time. I live in six, seven month of a year. It's coming in, uh, this year.
Okay, so you plan to rent it out when you don't live there as well?
Uh, I always gonna have my stop there, but I traveling quite a bit, five, six month of a year.
Who's gonna look after the property when you're not there to make sure?
I have my boyfriend living with me for seven years.
So he won't be traveling with you?
Um, sometimes he does, but most of the time he doesn't.
Never.
Thank you. Um, do you have anything more to add before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you.
But if they need a more parking, I glad to provide a more parking.
Okay, thank you. Hey, the public hearing is open now to, for public comment. If you'd like to comment on this, step to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Byron Wolf. I'm a Garden of the Gods residence. Uh, I don't know if you guys know the history of the Garden of the Gods, but that was developed in the early seventies. That's about the time I bought my property up there. And, uh, it actually has, I'm a member of the uh, Architecture Review Committee. Uh, it's a small community. There's twenty seven residents, so. And, uh, it's very nice, very homey, good stuff. Section one of our covenants says section one, land use, building type and occupancy, lots shall be used solely for one dedic detached, single family dwelling purpose only. That's all. So this goes against our covenants. It also goes against everything that we all live in there for. It goes against the purpose and the spirit of our community. And I don't want it personally. That's me speaking. As far as the Architecture Review Committee, it goes against our covenants and shouldn't happen because of that. Any questions? Have you, you guys been up there? Have you driven up it?
Um, I just wanted to note that for the planning department, you understand that we can't administer your covenants. We, we hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I know. I'm just telling you that that is against our covenants.
Understand.
Yeah. Anything else?
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm, uh, Roy Rosenthal with three sixty via Linda Vista. We also own a lot of three seventy via Linda Vista. We're the longest standing residents there. We've been there forty six years. Um, so I, I believe I know quite a bit about the history of the development. The, what I want to speak about is the fourth issue in the report about, um, the commercial access on the shared driveways, the, the access um, easements. The report is that the applicant has not provided information about commercial use. I believe there's sufficient information to determine that the developers intended that access for personal use only of the residents. Um, in fact, I looked at the plat that was uh, used for, for approval of the development. And it says um, that the land would be planted into lots, streets and easements. Said street is hereby dedicated to public use. It's essentially saying the easements are not for public use. On the plat, one of the five easements on the street has a specific designation for public use. That's for pedestrian access into the Garden of the Gods. By omission, they they basically chose to indicate whether there was additional use or not. And the other four easements, including the one in question, shows no commercial use. So my position is that the application should be denied because commercial use is not permitted.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak?
Uh, thank you. My name is Robert Lamont and I live at two ninety. And, um, I prepared a statement earlier that really was based on our covenances. And, um, I see that um, might not be applicable here, but, um, I would like to just read one paragraph out of my, the statement I, um, presented today, and that is, uh, a short term rental in the Garden of the Gods states contradicts our covenances and will change the intended use and traditions of our neighborhood. And according from the Manitou zoning, um, not sure if it's regulations or exactly what, but chapter eighteen point eight nine, Vacation Rentals, eighteen point eight nine point zero one O, it states regulations ensure that rentals, and this is the part I'm like to emphasize, do not encroach upon traditional neighborhood characteristics. I think granting this would absolutely, um, encroach on our neighborhood characteristics. The neighborhood characteristics are, uh, expressed very clearly in our covenances. And they've been around for, since nineteen seventy five. So we have a long history of, uh, of, of, um, basically maintaining our neighborhood in certain ways. And I think allowing this would be contrary to the statement in the, in the zoning regulations that I've listed. Um, is there any response to that?
No, well, thank you. We've taken into consideration. Any questions for Robert? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Blakesley at three three zero.
Get, get real close to the mic.
Can you hear me? Uh, Sarah Blakesley at three three zero via Linda Vista. Um, I submitted a letter that highlighted a lot of concerns of the proposed, the existing applications proposed parking. And, um, they highlighted not only the in non suitability of the geography. It's on a slope lot that isn't adequately retained. And also the fact that it is by, um, the city code not adequately large enough to support two vehicles. Um, at the time I submitted it, one of the vehicles was actually overhanging onto the easement, the asphalt. So the comment that additional parking could be added to the site would be an interesting one. Um, it is, as the house is situated on some very large geographic boulders. And it's also adjacent to at least one other residence where it would have to be taken into account their splitting situation if additional parking were to be added. So that's all I had.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Newman. I reside at three two five via Linda Vista. And I also submitted a letter. And rather than, um, reiterating something that my neighbors have already said, I just want to touch on the issue of safety on the street of via Linda Vista. Um, in particular, I think a neighbor of ours who can't be present tonight submitted a letter talking about the blind curve that exists right outside of the applicant's residence. And this is also on a cul-de-sac, which one of the other neighbors mentioned has a private uh, easement for pedestrians to access Garden of the Gods. And we have a wide demographic that lives on our street. They range from families with young children to athletes that run the hill regularly to seniors. And so there are bikes and walkers and strollers without sidewalks that travel up the hill to access Garden of the Gods. And so I think parking has been mentioned, but additional traffic that is unfamiliar in our neighborhood to come through and access that property in a commercial way presents a safety issue. I also commented there was a horrific accident that occurred on our street on New Year's Eve where numerous safety and first responders, um, came to the rescue of someone who did sur- survive the accident over the embankment. And had there been anyone parking on the street because they could not access parking within the driveway or within the garage, I believe it could have compromised that individual's life. So I would like today, just to reiterate the safety requirements of the residences that live on via Linda Vista. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
We do have three online participants.
We do have three online participants at this time. None of them have their hand raised. However, to the people that are attending online, if you'd like to participate, please raise your hand and we can unmute you.
Okay, seeing no more takers, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to deny STR 2305 for three reasons. The lack of information provided on the application, especially due to the easements, but not only related to the easement, the lack of existing parking and the detriment to the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Is there any more comment? Okay.
If I could, and I apologize if I'm overstepping here. It is typically a standard practice to move approval and then vote against it because when you vote, when you move for denial and then you vote for it, it's, it kind of creates a double negative situation. I, we can absolutely keep the.
This is the process we use generally. Hey, we have a motion and a second. So if there's more discussion, then all those in favor of the motion to deny, raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, and what is the appeal process if the applicant wants to appeal?
The applicant has 10 days to submit a written appeal to the city clerk's office and the appeal would be heard by city council.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to other business. Do we have anything else?
Just again, in the interest of education, generally speaking, when an application comes in that's insufficient, why does it get to this level?
So it is the right, and we do have our attorney online, so I might tag him in as well, but it's my understanding that the application, the applicant has a right to be heard by City Planning Commission when they make an application. And staff can review it and try to ensure that it is a complete application. Try to do everything we can to not bring incomplete applications forward. But as I stated, there was kind of a fairness to this particular type of application where we couldn't keep kicking it down the road. Austin, do you have anything to add?
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. I think that was a great answer. The one thing I would add is that the code does require that applications be complete before they go to the reviewing body. Sometimes you get into these issues where an incomplete application is still going to the reviewing body because it's an issue of interpretation where the applicant is saying, but it is complete. I believe it is complete and staff is saying, we believe it is not. And so in those cases, the recommendation is for staff to allow the reviewing body to decide. And in this case, it seems that the planning commission pretty quickly decided that staff was correct in deciding that this application was incomplete. But if you ever get those issues of interpretation, then it's best to allow the reviewing body to settle it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, with that, I think we'll adjourn the meeting.